Y'all ready? Show a little act of three?
Okay. I had my prayers at WUS about four times. We missed about a four.
I have a word of prayers, thank you Father for all you blessed us all. Over our footsteps in God's wisdom and what we're pursuing and putting together. In Jesus' name we pray amen.
I hope we're gonna... Yeah. Oh, it isn't that one?
Let's start with Lisa, can you tell us what, some things you may say that we need to fill in the agenda?
Uh, we had some of the things on the agenda this last month, but I really didn't have a whole lot going on. I do know that we had a couple of board members at the water board that their term was ending, that those folks have agreed to go and turn another term. The commissions are out of that, so we made a resolution for the commission to accept those members.
Same good rap.
Yeah, I don't care. You're Janison, Janison, who's your commander?
You're Janison.
Janison.
I'm Janice Stewart.
Everybody deal with that, being on consent, like, yeah. When it comes around, I'm having to put their name. Go ahead.
I'm working on number things, I don't think that somebody necessarily needs to be on the deliverable's top. But I am looking at our expenses for JSH, I've been doing some comparisons on whether what they're paying is each quarter discovering the expenses for their portion of the building. I've kinda got into that a little bit today, and it's very close, which we're not trying to make money off of, but it's very close. I'm trying to make sure that we don't need to increase that amount a little bit. I saw that it actually had been increased in 2019 was the last time we did a little bit of an increase. That we maybe need to do a little bit more. And I'm thinking about that also is, don't let it go several years where it's such a big jump off one time, but it's actually increasing a little bit each year, and then we should actually increase our payment a little bit each year.
Can we do that? I mean, we just re-deeped contract last year.
Yes.
Are we allowed?
It's got a clause in it, it's got a clause in it that it can be reevaluated every once a year. It actually has a date, and I have persons that know my calendar today, so we can remember to do that every year. Because if we're gonna do that, we gotta send them a letter by June first. So I asked her to get my county calendar from May first that we started their page.
So you've calculated how much you're gonna increase it, what is percentage for that increase?
I don't really have to, this time I've been getting into the numbers enough, it's very, very close. It's not gonna be a whole lot, we're gonna have to increase it. I saw that the letter that Kim sent out the last time they increased, and the letter says 24,000, but we're not actually currently charging them 24,000. It's a little bit over that, it's like 23.6 or something like that that we're actually charging them right now. So I do think we probably need to increase a little bit, but it's not gonna be like, oh my gosh, you know, 5,000. This will be just a small percentage that's gonna need to increase. But like I said, even if it's just a small percentage, I think it's good, I did to work and do it. Because then it's not, you know, you're looking, if you did it every three years, it might look really bad and then all of a sudden jump it up a lot. And it's just the main expenses that we have shared expenses in this building. So I'm looking into that, and I'll ask some more.
Well, with all the debris there and all the paint and all that stuff we bought, and then we're doing it, we got the sewer dug up out here, and we're fixing to have to seal those floors over there, so... I think sometimes, I think sometimes it don't get added in like it should. I think you really put what it's taken to run this thing, and with the extra load that's being added right now, I mean, it's been used every Sunday going forward, right? I can't believe that we're not, I think one of the things that I keep saying, when we're spending money up here, and we're buying all this timber forest and all this paint and stuff, I think it is a little bit more. Because all that there is supposed to come out of the administrator, 911, and Jack's say?
He does need to find a, like that, he has been. Actually, when I started looking at the contract, I saw how they kind of figured it out, whether some of the expenses are specifically 100% for that side, and some expenses are divided amongst the whole mountain center, which would be 911, cabinet, and so forth. But like I said, I found an actual spreadsheet where it was used before, and it's pretty handy, and I can use that to pretty easily analyze what my recommendation would be on that.
Well, while we're talking about this building, the sewer lines coming in out here, you know, we thought it was gonna be, and it still is maybe, but usually it's always a clear pipe from point A to point B in front of the holding tank over to where the murky water goes to. But what it is now, there's a T in the middle with a whole bunch of fittings, and then it's sitting right on the fiber optic line. They didn't do, you know, usually they keep at least eight inches for when your pipes, but it is literally laid flat underneath, I mean, it is no, so what, so we're gonna have to do that. I mean, a little bit difficult to do. One thing we can always do is just go back and maybe bring it down, and then come up and come over. I think, and then put a wire there instead of having, got that strip T running on into it? And put a wire so we go down there and put it in down here instead of right here. Everything's up, nothing's up on top of your, that's where you might want to do it with a tractor.
Uh, what about the sidewalk, were you still on?
Well, this here, that's a whole different, I hope once we, right now what it is, when the water comes out, it hits and it just turns back around and it comes and it clogs all right up against where the water comes in. There's, and when that water comes out into the tank, it should drop down about four inches. It just starts backing right up into your sewer line. Hopefully, because if you go up here and you flush four toilets, and it's about that deep in the pipe, so what happens is whenever anything comes down the pipe, it just sort of stops. And then, so hopefully if we can get the water lower down about four inches, then the water will come out there in the pipe and drop down.
This JSH thing too, I did not see a clause in there, and I would look at it more carefully. I only just pulled the contract today to see if there's an exception in there for any kind of major expense or major repair we have in the building. But the main thing is I didn't notice, there might be something in there for that, but...
Yeah, that, well, my thing is, that thing was never installed, I mean, I mean, this is the first time it's ever run. I mean, we've been having it run now for about a year. It used to, we just been mopping tanks. It hasn't run, now it is running, at least it is working. So I think we'll get that all going, hopefully we won't have to try the sidewalk.
But we did do an increase of some percentage.
Yeah, that'd be much.
Enough to make sure it should not be very much, and like I said, you can only do it one time a year, and that time is that they have to have that letter by June first. So we'll make sure that we address that before we go when we start moving with it, but...
Now, when Hethin did their increase on the water, did they do, or is that Everfield? We got ours from Everfield? Our water comes from Everfield? I know Hethin's got they doing that on the water in the sewer.
Right, they was building, they was building ours in the canyon.
I think Everfield buys up from the canyon, I mean, crazy.
All their mines are tied together. I think mine, it's just monopoly on our money for what it is.
You was right about the tied together part, I don't know about the rest of that.
And I really, other than I'm just working on things like we've got ethics forms that are coming up, I found that entity list this week, so that's my part of it, that I have to train all the employees and people that have to fill out those ethics forms each year. So y'all will be getting an email before too long on that, because that has to be done by April 15th, because our deadline on that. Like I said, I got a number of things going on, but I'll figure it in twenty minutes, a resolution, so we're okay right now.
That's all you have?
Yeah.
I've got some other questions.
Projects.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you all a question, go ahead.
Well, what do you do?
Go ahead, y'all ready questions?
I have.
Go ahead.
Uh, I want, have you, have we thought, have we ordered any of this year, we talked boards yet, or?
Yes, we've got two like boards in the last couple weeks or so.
Oh, there you go.
Uh, they've been hanging out, not yet, not rep yet.
Okay, well, tomorrow I'll get Fred to hang your things. If anybody's going out of town, I want to make sure they're on the board, and I want to make sure that their stuff is, it is paid, and wait for them to get there. I sure don't want them to wind up down there somewhere, and they'll have a room. So as we, I'm just saying, what are we gonna put on there? When we got to do like the square, you know, who's gonna be out of town? And that way we know, I guess you're the one that sends the checks out, aren't you? Or a book?
No, I do book the reservations.
Yeah, and so I guess I'm gonna know that if you're doing the reservations, then it all needs to sort of come in with one little bow tie that we know that the check is there, and maybe we send out, you know, whatever it is, a check number or something that the rooms have been paid for. I just don't want nobody out of town, and they're sitting down there trying to figure out what, some of us has credit card, believe it or not, but some people don't have a credit card, but they had to pay for it out of pocket or something.
We would actually prefer if the departments would allow us to book the room and book the conference at the same time, that actually kind of ties everything up for us. Because what happens is a lot of people book their own rooms, but they have us book the conference, but they'll book the room for too many days because they don't know our rules about, you know, the starting date and departure date as far as how they're booking their rooms. There was several last week that had to actually say, you know, your conference is over at 11:30, you're only two hours away, you can't stay that night, that kind of thing, so that is sort of...
Is that not just, is that not just a group email that we were sending out? That, I mean, why can't we book the rooms from here? I mean, if we got, the checks gotta come from here, why, you think we?
I don't know, unless, I mean, you get in particulars with maybe Joyce and me, but I don't know. I always let them book for me, it's a lot easier for me. But now Joyce may not, I don't know.
And the same thing is about when we meet up at a conference, I look, you know, we can't, we can't pay for this night, if y'all fix that right quick and send us another invoice, we'll get it in our APs when we have our check mailed out, because they'll use their credit card, their own personal credit card to book the room, but then we have to say, look, you can't stay four nights for a two-day stay or two-day conference.
Well, and I can see sometimes, like I have, we booked through the association, and they'll have a block of rooms set aside for us at the Capstone and Tuscaloosa. So that may be part of the issue, but I'll put my chief clerk on, make sure we got that security. She'll secure it with my credit card, but she gets a check from you guys.
Right, but we will only pay for the amount of days that we're allowed to. So that's, that's what we...
And a lot of times, a lot of times people, it's going down, I guess at least there's one perk that you get sitting there looking at it nothing, and watching the class, and a lot of times, you know, even when commissioners or even the boys go down, if they're going down to one of their conferences, and they got something they want to do in that area, or site seat or whatever, then they might book it two more days, but our check will only be for the days that we're gonna pay for. So what will be paid for is those rooms, and you know, they will take off, believe it or not, I mean, the hotel will take it off if you don't pay for it.
Well, everyone's been nice about that, and just, you know, just for them to know we can only pay for these days, so it's not a problem, it's just...
I know, I think probably Joyce has been part of leadership, and that may require her more and more time. I don't know, I never, I just never want to serve anything extra, or be on any extra.
Right, but we just checked the, we checked the kinds of the dates, and it's just part of checking, just like we do it now always to make sure that we pay for what we got, you know?
And I don't know what, what is right or wrong, but if you got, like you said, the corner, he ends up being the vice president of the association, he's probably gonna have more time down there, and our town is gonna end up picking up the deal for that, so I don't know what's...
I think that'd be something that, and I think it's coming through this office, then it wouldn't be a problem. If you know, if he's got paperwork showing that he's, you know, that he is leadership, or whatever he is, and he's gonna be there for Monday, I don't think we have a problem. If they're looking at, if they're looking at a piece of paper that says this is what my classes are, if you have entered yourself into something outside of that class, then only what they would know, if they, you send a check, you're only gonna send a check for three days. But if somebody's got either Monday for leadership and is sitting in a meeting on Monday and Tuesday, then y'all need to know that.
That's right.
And it'd be a big deal.
They need to tell us that, they usually tell us.
They do?
Yeah.
And sometimes the associations, if they've got people who are very savvy in that area, well, that's coned. Because they booked using that hotel, they booked the whole thing, so the hotel will give them so many rooms sometimes. I don't know if they do that with shares, but...
They do it with water.
They do it with water, yeah, there's a lot of concept sometimes for extra, for people who are planning, so I don't know.
It is not really just trying to give it any like particular mark on us, just we've got to have affect and prove that everything is standard, of course, for our audit purposes.
But you're not having a problem getting that here, my friend?
No.
Just to make sure that we're getting it set up.
We're just asking for things, but it's fine. And speaking of which, Billy Williams and myself, we will be gone next Wednesday and Thursday to crack for our class. And this Friday I have ACAA regional meeting, we mentioned that at the last meeting, it's law, the regional ACAA meeting, there's one in Gadsden, we'll be in that on Friday, but it's only a couple of hours, so I'll be in then after lunch, it's from 10 to 12. So sometime after lunch, I'll be in, I'll be going to that too. I think that's all.
You have any questions? Go ahead, okay. How hard would it be to break out the grocery tax? And another question I have to tell you, is the grocery tax, just the two grocery stores that we have? Or is there a convenience store that sells groceries? They got groceries?
Even your truck stops that has, because their particular license has Russian number.
How hard would it be to break that out? And just, you know, just keep the last quarter or last month or whatever you wanna do?
I'm sure the hard way to run that, I'm not as familiar with our, I love the company website as I was, but I believe and I'm sure there's a way to pull that out of it, which is our code, you mean, and pop. I want to do that.
Most of the locations have, when they bring their merchandise up, it's just, it's daddy's school, grocery, tobacco. Everything is listed, so we should do that.
It just depends on how hard it is to do it for a board. You pay, that's how you, cats, that's how you pay it, so it should be, it's listed for. It's, so we can do that, when you talk about just doing quarters for, trying to find out how much?
Just a month, a quarter, whatever, whatever seems to...
What's the profit as long as I have it, or do you think about it?
They're on my pay per quarter, I mean, they're probably gonna show you what we're starting.
The, I mean, I haven't read the bill, they're just talking about, or is this a state part of it? I'm not sure. I just don't know how much worth money we're talking about for our county before. I thought our representative did give you the math, you know, so... Well, if, if it's not our sales tax, it's not gonna hurt us, it's gonna hurt more, it's gonna hurt his cash than it is us.
Yeah, the money's gonna have to be replaced from somewhere, and we're gonna go to Congress.
It's gonna be more of an education battle than, I think, probably us, but I'll check and see if it would affect, if it would null and void our sales tax on groceries, so... I know, I do know that where we're at, we're a veteran community to Jordan. And so many folks, including my wife, she's gonna come home, and she's gonna stop carefully, not out of necessarily price, but it's just, you know, convenient. And we still buy groceries over here, but she's gonna stop a lot down there. And we have a lot of people who work for Jordan.
You'd be surprised that your truck stops, what sales tax is paid on groceries?
Yeah.
Because all those were candy items, they filed under grocery.
Right, right.
So you really would be surprised.
Yeah.
I'll get some numbers to make that, for later.
Yeah, it's amazing what people can buy with it, food, you know, some, um, it's food.
Yeah, that's ridiculous. Grocery cart that'll come over.
Any questions?
The litter pickup program. Sam says we'll be doing an excellent job of just about over 100 litter. So, that's a good thing. But, so what I've got going is, I've got a wise environment brand that 20 yards of container just for the litter bags. It's $450 a dummy. If we dump it once a week, which if the rain is going, is what it'll take, I don't know, gotta curb off some later on, and it probably will, but it works out, about to finish the year out about $10,000. My question is, will that come with them, or will we need to do about the additional money for that?
Will we not just adjust your budget for it? Because that's still cheaper than what we would pay a contractor if you come in here and hit it.
It is, and it is, and we would, it's more expensive.
So we'll just wait until towards the end to adjust it? Would it not be better to adjust it towards the end?
Because that way we'll actually have a firm number of what we need to adjust it for, and when we get down to, you know, July or August, we'd probably get a better idea of exactly how much.
And they just call on the tires and the, all the other stuff, the tires and all the other stuff going in other dump.
Tires and CME is one in the, in the other container, but if it's, if it's real, it's gotta be in separate container.
If you wouldn't just know on the A and P report you're gonna have a negative, then we know where it's raising, it's negative there.
I'm fine with that, I just wanted y'all to know it was coming, because it...
Thank you, shooters. I'm just glad it's getting picked up.
Please. Beginning with, like the first two days, it was about 36 bags in one day, a boy and a neck, and we had everything out of that, so... Second thing, out of the landfill, I gotta do a little bit of re-sleeping, a little maintenance and stuff, that's just not, it's not like the camps I see you come out of much, so you see a few birds or some, some mangy grass manes, so that's what it's gonna be. I gotta do some of that that's spring, to get some of those areas renovated, get some good cover on. But also I was gonna ask about the possibility of getting some tenant prices for the timber itself. Tenant prices, I mean, in the back position at the moment, and we'll do nothing but benefit that out there to be thinned. Well, there's 103 total, and 30 of us in landfill, so at least, so the apron, I think it's probably about six total.
I'm just gonna click it.
Do that too, but...
And that's what the timber companies are doing now, they're planting 20 years, they're trying to put a plant in the end. I'm done that twice, I'm just gonna support it out there.
Yeah, it will. What thoughts on this?
Yeah, good point, if they're gonna, they're gonna thinned it, they're gonna down it middle of the road.
And then there's, and y'all go ahead, have a guess, because I ain't, and legislators can't afford to knock the best on all of this, but... So there's two bills that are trying to make the eligibility for this year. One is the contractor liability bill, and one is a liability. And a lot of the surrounding engineers, surrounding counties, they're pushing out the issues to pass a resolution against them. And so I was gonna, kind of talk a lot about that too.
So why they took?
So the contractor liability bill, basically...
Well, I know that, I think that's, I thought you said lobby.
The lobby bill will increase the waiting to 100,000 bucks.
Y'all put that on consent or any business?
Yeah, we'll move that against that.
You need a resolution that's coming, I just like for us to...
Hey, ladies and gentlemen, here we go, just a resolution.
Yeah, I think we did.
It's about to be, actually.
Wouldn't y'all want any business or consent?
No, we don't want to stress that, but...
Consent, consent.
And then the contractor liability bill, the contractors are asking for zero liability. From the time basis, start the project all the way through, no liability whatsoever, and then... That's what they're...
Yeah, we're really having issues, because, I mean, usually if they come in and do a job, you sign off on it, and three months later, if like the job collapsed, then we're stuck with.
We're stuck. And it's, and it's some of, the road builder association is trying to sell it as, you know, it's gonna cut costs because they're not willing to carry a bunch of insurances and all this kind of stuff. But from our standpoint, all it's gonna do is increase, because we're, the maintenance bids are out, we know we're gonna have to put a set of plans to get over every project, the inspection departments and everything that goes with it. This is not...
All right, contract and bill, consent, everybody deal with that, okay? Any questions?
Well, I had to leave it, look, and see if we could find one of those lawn mowers, because I fixed that. And I think it's gonna be under the, it's gonna be close to what money we put in there, but it runs up to 15, I think it's in my budget if we go over. I just, if we're gonna get to go pick it up next week, if it is over 15, I just like to get a PO just in case it is. Right, yeah, so... So I'm, we're gonna keep both of them, and then Sam is gonna use, you know, what they all be using, like we're gonna...
Do you need a resolution, Fred?
If it's gonna go differently, do.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's true.
Y'all need?
I ain't for sure, but I don't think it will, but I ain't for sure.
But I just don't want to have to go pick it up, and then...
Not be able to...
Will you, y'all wanna put a PO on the consents in it, then? Will you fix it up, y'all?
We wanna put a cap on it, or just lay it to, or just, just lay it?
PO.
Well, what's up for sure, I guess, just please?
PO for?
You're gonna put like...
Lawn mowers? All consent, okay?
The lady I needed to talk to just went there already, so I'll do that down.
Is that good, we get there? Sher, you got anything?
Patrick went in with the cones, so he's had to be a packet. The upfill.
What's this on, sir?
The upfit and the pre-cord.
Oh, yeah.
Most of our items on there, ones to send to be at that. Scyvers and the leprechaun, they did.
Have we got your cars yet?
No.
Do, any kind of action, any big technical risks as far as resolution?
We only have the board that responded to the rest.
Well, there'll be a PO, I don't know. Is this coming out of the money or what?
I don't, Patrick's been in contact with scyvers, so I don't, I don't know when that, when that bear is.
So, you, what's the amount on it?
31 something.
About, no, I would say 31.5.
Yeah, 31.42, yeah.
Y'all, y'all gonna go ahead and just put that on consent?
Yeah.
That, you're verified?
Yeah, that's good with me.
I have one question, do you remember how much stoppers they're gonna do it for, and what we, and what's it? I've got to pack one.
I don't remember, I'll tell my head, but I don't think it's in that bid back to hand, they didn't, they didn't respond on it.
All right, we got that on, on consent, Janice? For 31, you said?
It was 31.429.
Okay, I see, yeah, thanks.
Now, just gonna give a little bit of monthly updates. Current population, we have seven inmates, this is past month of February. There was 77 inmates that had bonded, the US, or this court released. Now, we had 340 inmate detailed man-hours, there was 147 make the trash collected from the roadways. Includes just regular trash, various amounts of tires, and other hard items also picked up. Patrol investigations, there was 911 call traffic stops or any other kind of system, there's 923 of those. Surfed once, we had nine felony, 16 misdemeanor. That's 81 civil papers served, we had 16 felony and 17 misdemeanor on the arrest. There was 106 high-end reporters done. We had two sex offender clients. There was 14,800 picked one, log patrol miles, and 1,211 business checks.
Y'all good in the booth, you guys?
Yeah. That's about all we have.
Any, any luck on securing you for the courthouse?
We still haven't heard nothing, only a... Oh, another thing, the lobby did stop red, so we're...
Oh, we're gonna, what we gonna do?
We had a pair of it.
I know we had a pair of it.
Are they cleaning it right now? I'm hoping if it comes clean, I think we can get bile stain in it.
Okay.
And I think it'll probably be cheaper than putting the towel back down. So I'm hoping it'll come clean enough that we can get this, this stain will be done with it.
Okay.
I guess we'll see.
Well, there's, I mean, there's other things that we can do in there as far as putting down, but the main thing is to sell that joint.
Yeah.
I think it's... I think it's, and then, uh, but we can, but.
And we did have water again, the Friday of that.
On that far side?
Yeah, well, I may have called here, but.
Yeah, yeah. And then, but I'm just saying, you know, there's that, like, paint and sand that they put down, but I, we need, I, I, I would hope we just make it, did the sand and concrete and stain it, because then that takes all of it out of it.
Yeah.
So we'll just see what it is, we'll just see what we have to do, probably do.
Yeah.
I just, hey, Blue, I just didn't see that blue coming all pieces like that, I mean.
About half of the tile, I mean, they have, so they showed you a picture of it?
Yeah, I told her, yeah, I thought we looked at it.
About half of the corner curled up, they just, I mean, you can take and just pull it up.
I think, I think, I think if you shot a moisture thing under that, it'd be like sitting on top of the river.
Yeah.
There's a lot of moisture under that.
Any other questions for John?
John, thank you for coming and being so active, since you came in office, it really, to me, impresses all of us that you're here and keeping us informed, and we've got a good working relationship, but I wanna thank you personally for doing.
And taking care of citizens, I mean, y'all done a great job, Mr. Arby, I think.
Yeah, thank y'all for, y'all done a good job.
Thank you, John. Ms. Fuller, you got anything?
Nope. We're ending, we're ending this collection period up, we got about a hundred and eight left, after that, we'll be done for another year.
Mr. Copeland, you got something on the water, it's all you got?
Yes, sir, last time I mentioned y'all about the season, do you have a fish, possibly? I was using, if y'all, I mean, if y'all have some ideas, it's a little bit difficult because there's the criteria they gotta meet, and whatever. The, uh, the top one, actually gave them all away. Here, this part, the, uh. Most of yours covered somebody else's, so like the water. The, uh, the second, the one eighteen, that's what I know in this county that will get the most residents, because I don't know. There are, there's a nine-one-one where it comes off of, it's got fourteen mailboxes on it, I would have to address.
Eighty.
Maybe an easement to go up through there, if those folks are interested, but one eighteen itself has eighteen houses on it. That's, uh, where I know we can get the most residents within that budget, which is the second one.
It's in District Four?
Our District One. District One, I'm gonna find out about, that is something that, uh, needs to happen. The top is the backup feed for, for, for Edersville, the whole town of Edersville, everything around there, every single bit of that water comes down fifty. When we need a bridge replacement, have to tie that in, it kills everything. All the water becomes seventy-eight south, Fricker, South Edersville, sixty-five, the water does not connect on seventy-eight, and it does not connect at thirty-five. Thirty-five would be a backup to you, thirty-five on sixty-five, four, thirty-five. You need to feed these sixty-five, uh, thirty-five, which is feed, to heat water for Fricker School, which is the main thing, schools, kids, and the whole community of Fricker, the whole community of Edersville. In saying that, I need to figure out, C D B G has a school method, and most of it's based on what, what, you know, if, I need to figure out if I can make that fit with the school, if I can get that stressed and actually make it fit their criteria, but that's the.
Probably, like, as much as, you know, I don't know, and you should, uh, it all should follow, that's kind of.
And the problem with that little section of thirty-five, there's only one house between the two connections that need to be made, but that would be a secondary feed for all of Fricker's, but that's the two, just projects out of this county that need to be done, but that's probably too much depressing, that's two.
Let me ask a dumb question, did this second one here, you says on nine-one-one road?
There is a nine-one-one off of that road, that one is not.
How do you deal with nine-one-one road since it's private property?
Uh, it would take, uh, easements, some, or property, there's, there's a few places that's happened, that's kind of a big deal.
They don't, they don't, come at you with, that's fair, money, probably, you know, it's not.
Well, if you can't resist it's water, but it is, it would be even, and you stay with the road, it's only a number, the words you mentioned, I understand, that is not actually a kind of.
I was, it might not be because they're, they're not actually taking taxpayer money directly, it's an ideal thing, but, or, or he's talking about this.
It's a little bit different, please.
Just don't ever go to the tire line, cause it's a fraud.
A necessity, it's not like.
I mean, I'm curious. I mean, working with more, see, it's a little.
I understand what you're asking, and what you're asking, there's, there's.
But you got, you, you go down a lot of private.
There's, there's a few of those, but instead of being on the roadway, and that's believe what we need to do, is if you take the, uh, which, just so you know, we need this thirty-foot even, so we come and make repairs in this, and in this, and a minimum of thirty-foot more to be able to make repairs, and we need to do.
This far from here, he's been at a risk, because if he doesn't get something done here, he has the potential of losing water to the school.
That's the biggest reason for thirty-five, if anything happens on thirty, or anything happens on sixty-five, or seventy-eight, Fricker's moving to where I want. The, uh.
Which means that, so do.
Which doesn't mean that somewhere else, I'll do it. Honestly, I've been doing water for, I think, twenty-two years, and I've only had school, actually, had a week once, get the schools out of water too, Howard, Montramp, it's, they gotta, they gotta shut it down. That's, uh, that's everybody looking to you as a hush. The, uh, those are two projects, in saying that, now, I'm not telling you a lot, you see the bottom number, these are cost estimates, uh, C D B project is three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So I'll see where this bid is, and see what I can do, and, uh, see where, about forty-eight thousand dollars over budget. Uh, so I have to do some figuring, but, uh, C D B G is three hundred and fifty thousand, the water department is required twenty-two percent, which is on top of the middle thirty-five thousand, so C D B G is normally three hundred and eighty-five thousand, this was coming in at today's bid, it's more like four thirty. So there's still some figuring to do, but anyway, that's a lot of information, if it's all right with y'all, we will apply for this, for the C D B G, this coming year, if that's needed, permission.
Consent, compare y'all on that? Consent, any other questions?
One more thing, if I could say one more thing, there's a section that you're gonna hear about in your district, I believe, which is County Road Six Fifty-four, that, that, that's twenty-three, thirty-seven.
Six, six, five?
Six fifty-four.
Six fifty-four.
There's, uh, sixteen houses, one up on that road, those sixteen houses, you don't know anybody, think I'm about to look those sixteen houses, they're not going to fit in the C D B G criteria, so there's, uh, if y'all find anything, I'm looking for some money.
Yeah, four, four, over, I think, I think there's an hour, so far, eight houses, so far.
And speaking of that, the four forty-four is one of the ones on our harbor project, and remind y'all to, a bit of, in this fifteen, eleven o'clock at our office, there's, uh, maybe surprise bids, maybe someone below, maybe y'all be high, but normally we get two or three bidders, uh, as of last Friday, eight big, no, six, in order to bid that, don't win the wheel, which you usually don't have that deep, a little bit backwards, and they still got time to make more, but that's why it's a, how many companies want to be? Maybe I'll work there.
It can be good, or it can be bad.
There may all be, uh, there's more competition.
All right, so when we vote on this water, C D B G, we're, we got picked one of the two, right?
Actually, if you will, if, if I can.
Yeah.
If you approve that, if, I hate to make stipulations, but if C D B G does not want the thirty-five projects in there, due to the fact that it's only one house, if I can't get the fact that it's backup feed in the school to qualify, I may need to supplement something else in thirty-five. Thirty-five would be best if they would let me put thirty-five in there, but thirty-five, literally, if the district house or some house, and if they'll let me express the fact that it's all a hood, it's been all Fricker's, I would hope it would qualify.
But are we choosing all of this, or just, are we getting between the two?
Both, both.
Okay, okay, I understand.
The whole project, that's just two options that I've given, like, since it's a little budget, but if it's all right with you, with y'all, if thirty-five will not qualify, I'll need to speak something else in this, in this spot in thirty.
All right, let's go over what we got running, consent, board members, water board.
Right, um, the logging and contract, characters liability issues, they're bills are in it, um, a P O for lawnmower, for fifteen thousand, um, the upfitting of the sheriff's department vehicles, and the C D B G resolution.
Six things on the consent, is there anything you guys want on there?
I don't think a resolution, but we can decide about yours.
That's, uh, county debt, what, eight, are we looking at?
Yeah, April or May, April fourth, April eleventh, May second, May sixteenth, I figure time to get to June, and it's wasted time, you want to do.
I think May is, I think more heated.
I just wanna.
Is it just a trip down there for a day, for a day, right?
It's a day trip, isn't it?
I got plenty of hot like y'all can go.
Man, I don't know what it's ever got us.
I ain't made, I mean, I got, I get water, I think you're.
I wanna go get water.
We need your faith.
He paid me, man.
Yeah.
It's just like the cycle, it's real, like the cycle, so she.
I don't think so, no.
What about April and May?
I don't know about that, I, I, well, if y'all can set it up, set it up, and if I can go, I'll go, let's put it that way.
What day is it, about a week?
Two.
I love your teeth.
I feel like I'm gonna eat some water, I guess.
This is, I know you said.
I'll do that to you.
Y'all gonna go late second?
Well, I ain't saying nobody's gonna go down for any other reason.
That'll be right after our work session.
I'll do good, there, I just feel wanna go, you mind if I put some more?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll try to go.
It's very good.
Can we get Lisa, uh, second mail, so our two representatives, I tell them, I bet they're coming in, that way, we don't have to run down.
Wait, Jackson, tell them to come and take it?
Like, one year we forgot to tell them, you're not gonna help down.
We probably tell y'all, if you tell, you're coming.
Y'all, you know, the government, so that we're, we're ready to help.
Just tell them delegation.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Arm delegation.
All right, y'all, we need to, you know, similar.
Was, is everything, they, you play on the, on the, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Everything's, uh, yes. Are you ready, if I'm going to do that, which is in charge?
We're not, we promise, I think we're all just starting to get all the pieces put together, all, all where we're all clicking in, or thoughts of something, we're gonna, so, we're gonna do it. Get some checks and lights, to make sure, I think, we're done, yeah.
Just make sure to keep it's all, that, you know, when there is a problem, that we're not having to hear about it, come outside, so, so.
Uh, we may, can I, can I fix up, good time? Ask you. Good time?
I got that money moving around, right?
Yes, sir.
So, um, we'll see, everybody back on the fifteenth, four thirty?
How you doing, so, come on?
I just never know what it is, I just happened to call John, uh, John, um, earlier, we found something out in the field, and, and called him to bring his attention, and, uh, he said, I'm gonna be at the mountain center, and I was like, oh, must be me, so I went back out of the car.
I text you too, but, well, yeah, please, could you know that each one of our head of department to remind them that, um, we have commissioners meeting at a work session, and our meeting, with their schedule, just remind them.
It'd be great, because there's a lot of days, it's just me in the office, and I can't come, but there are some, you know, there's some times that I'm, I mean, they can use our, just, uh, first time, but.
Did Miss, did Miss Marle even come up?
Uh, yes, Stan.
All right, you sure ain't the twin if I next to you?
Oh, I was in May, I was looking, because we, because I was looking, she also.
Man, I'm here, I'm on the game, right here.
I believe you will definitely.
He got, yeah, I'm, I'm here, and I'm like, this day. Twenty, but we, we talked about that county day while we go, and, and we're on May, and I just looked at the third or three.
I'm on my third.
Left, right, and also, lunch, and we're just like, well, this is, a left, right, and a right, and a left, and a right, and then more, and then some like, and then just like.
Chan's so paranoid about, uh, the other day, you know, when you get, uh, between the names, and, and, and you got that, hey, and you know, I used to swap it out, spend a lot of days out, and, and the lady said, you're, you're spending a lot more money, Chan's so paranoid because he's with those, like, like. Oh, they keep doing that, I see, they buy yours, they call mine, he's, uh. You know, they just couple of them, so, they just.
And we're working on, we're probably sixteen, four, and then our own.
Well, they probably did it for both.
And then, uh, we got Larry, who, um, you know, that.
Ron, can I speak to them, we just met about British federal rule?
No, you missed your time.
Okay, I was just gonna mention it, tell them.
Oh, Joyce, Joyce wants to talk to y'all one minute.
Uh, I, I don't know if you're aware, I think I actually sent an email out, that there's an administrative rule, um, that has been proposed in the House, um, on the state of Alabama not being able to pass a, uh, a change in how I do my work, or how the state tricklers do their work, or D H R, any, any facility that works under the umbrella of the, the state, uh, without following the administrative rules. Um, this has affected our county negatively, and, in that they passed, or, they went to the administrative rule to, to decide that section forty-two, low income, section forty-two housing, could be appraised at a different, in a different manner than all other, uh, buildings and structures, and so the state gave each one of those a value, and gave us a memo, and said, this is the memo, and you have to follow it, even though the administrative rule failed. And so, um, we have some senators that have this, uh, House bill out there, it may be a Senate bill at this point, uh, Senate bill out there that has already been read twice, and it may be something that you have support with, but it would, it, it could negatively affect us, because if they decide that tomorrow, that they're not, no longer going to allow our, our appraisers to do fair and equitable in the field, it could affect us on how we bring in revenue in the tax base. And, and I know that y'all are aware of this, that most of your tax base, Cleveland County, is going to come from property taxes. So we don't want the state just making a change on the memo, saying, this is how you're gonna do business. They're supposed to follow administrative rule, which means that they're, if they wanna make a change in the code of Alabama, they have to come before this administrative, they have to post it for thirty days, and they have to have, set those, uh, oppositions to it, they have to have a hearing, and then, then they vote on it. And if it is voted down, they don't get to implement that, they were voted down, and then they implemented it by memo. So they're trying to, uh, stop that, Sonny Brassel, Brassel, the, um, the state, uh, A C C A, um, he is big behind this, and pushing it really hard, because I think it's affected, there's two, two present lawsuits, uh, one with D H R, and one with, um, uh, the Attorney General against. Uh, one with D H R, and one with, um, uh, the Attorney General against, uh, the ethics, where they did not follow administrative rule. And one of those have already lost, lost theirs because they didn't follow administrative rule, and I believe D H R is still in the case. So, no, it's, uh, the Attorney General's still in the case, D H R lost, because they did not follow administrative rule. It's, it's important, it's how we maintain, uh, uh, checks and balances within the state. So it's, it's important, because for rural counties, and I've talked with, um, Chad Rockerson, and I've told him the importance of that. He said that they have a, um, a new, uh, group that's for rural, uh, counties, where representatives are from the rural counties, are kinda in a committee together. And he would, he would bring that toward them as well, to have them look at it, but I just think that it's something that we don't want the state doing it every week. And just decide, hey, this is how we're, we're gonna appraise property. And it is, it's hard for me to stand up in a court of law and say that we're being fair and equitable, when the state allows them to be appraised in a different manner.
So.
We lost money.
You're saying there's a bill coming up to this staff?
I think it's Senate Bill one seventy-two, I believe is the number, Senate Bill one seventy-two, I think is the number.
Or we just made Senate letters, yeah, we. Or agree to it, propose it, whichever way.
Uh, and, and my, my thoughts at this point is, I'm definitely for it being approved, because in my standpoint, when, when I am sued because of a value. Or the, the office itself is sued because of the value, we have to actually be able to support why we have this value on it. If the state is just writing out here, you're gonna, you're gonna appraise this section of buildings for, for a hundred thousand dollars, and we've got it at two point five million, that's a big problem. And it's not that big of a difference, but it is a big difference, I think one of our, we lost, uh, over a million dollars in assessed value. And that's a big deal to the City of Hefflin, to the, uh, school board, and to our county. That's a, that's a, that's a big hit, every year. Fortunately for Cleveland County, we didn't have to give any money back, like a lot of the bigger counties and a lot of the, uh, rural counties. If you were in a lawsuit, uh, at the time that this ruling came down, you had to send them money for back in twenty twenty-one. Because all of those were in court cases, well, we were in court cases as well, back in twenty, on our twenty twenty-one babies. But Deborah Jones, the, um, the judge, actually threw that case out because they would not supply her the information on how they came to their babies. And so she threw it out of court, because they wouldn't bring in their financial, uh, information that she was requesting, so it was thrown out. I received a call from the state, uh, the state's attorney, that said that I would be, having to send a refund, and I told him that they were, they were wrong, ours was thrown out. And he argued with me a little bit back and forth, and I was able to show him the, the email, and he, he determined, yeah, I was right, that we did not have to send a refund. But this could be an ongoing situation, if it's not low income housing, what is it next? So, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying that that's, that's gonna be a problem, if they can just make changes willy-nilly.
So, let's just say that you didn't throw it out, then the city of Hefflin, or the school would have to come back with their money.
Uh, yeah, in fact, I went in collections for twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, I would have held that money out, and that would have gone back to that, um, that handout.
That's the way it works.
Yes.
Okay.
You wouldn't have gotten future collections, you wouldn't have, it would have paid them back, so, yes. Yes, cause all of my money is dispersed, every, every fifteen days is dispersed. So there's no money at the end of the season, where you have to wait for collections again.
Is there a resolution, a letter, a resolution, y'all wanna put together supporting or?
Just do something, what we did, what we need to do.
Thank y'all, I'm sorry, I should have, I, I thought I said I have to, y'all.
Y'all good with that, consent? And, yeah, we're gonna call that. What's a good name for it?
Once again, we need to find that video, or the minister, we need, we need that video.
We're trying to find it.
You probably call me, get a suit, you live, I might like that.
Oh, yeah, uh, Sonny, Sonny Brassel will, he will put you out on it.
Alright, support the administrative rule, so. Put that on, consent, awesome? Anything else? Well, let's go.
That's not it, that's. It's not no big Senate, no one second, I'm gonna find it for you.